Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for the South Haven City Council for Monday, May the 4th, 2020. Again, this is a remote meeting. So I will start out by calling the meeting to order. And then we'll have the roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold.
Jeff Arnold's here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
Steve Schlot.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilken.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. That'll take us to the approval of the agenda.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Jeff Arnold, a second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. If there are no questions, we'll roll call this.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Schlot?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Next, we have the consent agenda items A through C. And this will require a roll call. Take a motion in a second.
This is George Sleeper. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Letitia Wilken's our second.
We have a motion and a second. And roll call, please.
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlot?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That'll take us to new business. City Council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2020-19, a resolution setting a public hearing date for the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget for May the 18th, 2020.
This is Joe Reeser. I'd like to make a motion that the city council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2020-19, a resolution setting a public hearing date for the fiscal year
Letitia Wilken's our second.
Very good. Motion and a second. Any questions about that? Hearing none? Let's roll call that.
Yes.
Schlot?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. So next, we're going to have an update from the South Haven Area Emergency Services, our new director, and the hiring process for the new Shays Executive Director. So Brian, I think we got Brandon on the phone.
Good evening. So members of council, if you look towards your screen in the middle is Brandon Hins, our new chief. He's taken over as the Executive Director for South Haven Area Emergency Services. Brandon is going to be working with our outgoing chief, Chief Wise, over the coming months as he learns the ropes. He's only got a couple of decades of training. I'll hush up and let you all talk with Brandon. Brandon?
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to pop in and introduce myself tonight. As Brian had said, I've been with Shays for 21 years, six years of the paid-on call and 15 as a firefighter paramedic. It's been 21 great years, very fortunate, very grateful to have been able to serve our community over the past 21 years and to look forward to the next 10-plus as Executive Director. Very excited about our possibilities, very excited about the future. I know we've had to step back a little bit because of COVID, but we'll work through it just like we have everything else. I look forward to meeting you all in person one of these days, hopefully. And again, thanks for letting me pop in and introduce myself. If you have any questions, feel free to ask either tonight or even all my contact info is on shays.org. Again, thanks a lot for letting me introduce myself.
Well, welcome again, Brandon. We're looking forward to working with you and already hearing great things about you getting out in the community. So well done on all fronts.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions you want to grill Brandon with where we let him off the hook?
Brandon, this is Jeff Arnold talking. Hey, could you just kind of talk us through some of the extra precautions you, your staff are taking right now when they go out on calls in light of the COVID situation?
Yeah, we've ever since it came to light, our levels have been kind of ramping up just as we've had to do out in public as well for the governor's orders. We, any, any call we go on now, any EMS call, we have our N95 masks, which thankfully, over the last few years, we've always kind of, we've always had them on the squads. And Chief Wise has always made sure we've had a good supply of those. So we have never been short. We've actually been able to donate some to Bronson, South Haven, because we had an ample supply. We wanted to keep our people here in town protected. So, but as the last few weeks have went on and progressed, thankfully, we haven't had too much of an outbreak in Van Buren or Alligan. The numbers have stated it kind of low considering other counties in the, in the state. But just being super precautious, you know, just like about anywhere else, we're taking our temperatures and doing the sickness survey when we come to work. Thankfully, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues. And I hope it remains that way. And we do have other protective measures that need be. We have Tyvek suits and gowns that we would wear if we did come across a patient that was suspected COVID, as well as we also have, they call it telehealth, well, where we have a iPad issued to us now. And if it's a patient that exhibits COVID symptoms, we actually call a doctor, there's a few doctors in the Region 5 district, we call them up, give them the symptoms, they actually talk to the patient on the iPad and they determine whether they're to be transported to the hospital or not, or to stay home in quarantine. I haven't had to do that personally yet. I think we've had a couple of our crew members that have. It's worked out well and maybe something that might stick around for the future, too.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and I hope all your people, you and all your people, stay safe.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we move on? Looks quiet. All right, next, we've got another update. This one is coming to us from Bronson Hospital, just talking about COVID preparedness.
Members of council, we have Dr. Matthew Dahmer on from Bronson. Dr. Dahmer, are you available?
I am, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Dahmer.
Dr. Dahmer and members of the council, I would just ask, speak as loudly as you can. I've gotten just one email asking for greater volume. With that said, I'll be quiet and I'll allow you all to speak with Dr. Dahmer.
Thank you, and thank you to the, to the council for letting me speak this evening. Is everybody hearing me okay at this point?
Yep, loud and clear.
Great, thank you. Before I get started, actually, I'd like to thank Shays for the cooperation that we've had with the emergency department and the hospital as a whole in South Haven. The teamwork has been fantastic. I think probably the, the best way to move forward, and I apologize that we don't have visual aids and you can't see my smiling face, although that's probably a good thing. I'll run through a quick update and then field any questions if that sounds okay.
That's perfect.
Great. I think there was a little bit of a summary sent out earlier, perhaps earlier in the week or, or in the past few days. But let me just add to that a little bit. Probably one of the biggest things with the COVID epidemic, obviously with the Bronson system as well as with Bronson-South Haven individually, is the establishment of incident command is a situation in which we create a command structure so that we can actually respond to an emergency as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Typically, those wind up being set up only for a few hours or perhaps a couple of days in most disaster scenarios. And in this situation, we've actually had incident command running 24/7 throughout the system since March 12th. So this is actually charting new territory, I think, across the nation, across the world as far as the way to approach this from a hospital standpoint. But that incident command allows us to respond to whatever challenges happen to be happening across the system and to efficiently distribute our resources as necessary. Specifically, in Bronson-South Haven, we've created a very detailed surge plan for COVID specifically, including controlled access to the building itself, curbside emergency department triage if need be, as well as expanded bed capacity, surge capacity, including 15 negative pressure isolation beds if necessary. Currently, at Bronson-South Haven, we have no active COVID cases, although we have had in the past. There are 29 active cases throughout the system. Those are actually all at both Bronson Methodist and Bronson Battle Creek. Specifically speaking to our resources, we have three ventilators at Bronson-South Haven. But when we talk about the incident command and being able to tap into greater resources, we actually have 97 ventilators across the system that can be moved around as necessary. As a system, we also have the capacity for 373 more beds if needed during a surge. 84 of those are isolation beds, some of which we've just created in the past month and a half, with 15, 57 of those isolation rooms available. From the standpoint of personal protective equipment, across the board for masks and gowns and the things that we hear about on the news all the time that hospitals need across the system, we have approximately a two to three week supply, but we continue to monitor that and stockpile as necessary. Recently, you've seen that the CDC actually changed some of their guidelines for treating patients as far as what personal protective equipment healthcare workers should wear. That was related to masks and that will actually increase our burn rate on those. So obviously, we're always looking to stockpile those. Now, something new currently is that we are gradually opening up more and more services while staying compliant with the CDC as well as the governor's executive orders. That includes diagnostic testing as well as more surgical procedures. From the standpoint of those, originally, it was only allowed that emergent surgical procedures were taken place. That has been relaxed at this point, and now we can move down to more urgent and less urgent, as well as some what are considered elective procedures for surgery. We'll have the ORs at Battle Creek, Bronson Methodist, and tomorrow Bronson Lakeview opens back up for surgical procedures as well. The one thing that I want to get across is that the facilities have been kept as safe as humanly possible for the patients and the public. That includes screening to gain access to the facility, as well as universal usage of masks while in the hospital itself. We continue to use the obvious social distancing, as well as meticulous cleaning protocols that we've developed. And then we continue to try and cohort the COVID cases as much as possible. And as we talked about, we do not have any active COVID cases at Bronson-South Haven at present. And I think with that, it would probably be best to open it up to any questions you all have.
I will wait till the end. So if there's, if there are specific questions, I know one thing, just, and I'll make sure I share the number, Dr. Dahmer. Again, sorry, this is Mayor Scott Smith, but that is just, folks are asking just generic questions about, you know, I've got a question, and we continue to defer to your primary care provider, you know, kind of start there as opposed to, you know, traveling to the emergency room or something like that. But start with your primary care provider, and if you don't have one, there's the number that Bronson's provided, the 269-341-7788. Would that be your thought process?
Yes, that's, that's a fantastic way to go about it. We, we try and point people as well to the Bronson Health website. That gives information both on, on the phone triage system, as well as the possibility of utilizing video visits, which can take place. We've actually had a tremendous number of video visits in the past month. We tried to ramp that up as quickly as possible when, when we realized that COVID was going to be with us. So that's been a significant asset. But obviously, when necessary, the emergency departments are open, just like they always are 24/7. And again, we're taking extreme measures to keep both patients and staff safe.
Perfect, very good. Any other specific questions for Dr. Dahmer from the council?
Steve. Go ahead, Steve. Steve Schlot here. I was just wondering if they plan on doing any non-symptom testing, or do you do any testing in the South Haven area at all?
So currently, we are not doing non-symptom testing, only because of still the relative paucity of testing media, as well as the, the testing equipment itself. So we're, we're still utilizing a protocol that will risk stratify people and, and actually indicate the people that, that would be appropriate for that testing. In Van Buren County, we're doing curbside testing at the Bronson Lakeview outpatient center. If the volume increases at Bronson-South Haven with our outpatient testing within the hospital itself, and it becomes necessary to stand up a curbside testing site, we will do so. We do have the capability at this point.
Oh, Jeff's gone.
My question was just about testing. Steve, Steve got it and the doctor covered it. Thanks.
Excellent.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Looks quiet. So Dr. Dahmer, again, thank you for being prepared. Thank you for the information, and we will share those resources with our community members.
That sounds great. If anybody needs to contact me for information or have any particular issues, again, I apologize, I was remiss in not fully introducing myself. I'm actually an emergency and trauma physician by training, and currently I'm functioning as the Vice President for Medical Affairs for Van Buren County, as well as the Chief Operating Officer. So please feel free to, to contact my office, or you can actually contact me by cell phone as well.
Very good. Thanks you again, Dr. Dahmer.
Thank you.
So next, we're going to get on to item eight, and I'm just going to, this will be one, just in case we've got any public comment. By the time I read through this list of names, it'll give them time to call in. And then after this next item, we're going to be to that point in the agenda where citizens in the audience were heard on items not on the agenda. So I'm going to give you that number now, which is 637-0777. If, we're going to start with the board and commission appointment. So if you have a specific question about that, you can call in. Following that, we'll move to citizens in the audience, or, well, I guess at home with questions. So item eight is, city council will be asked to consider a motion to appoint the following individuals to their respective boards and commissions. There are a few of them. So if it would please this group, I'm going to read the list and I will take a motion in a second to approve the entire slate. So here we go. We've got Mike Henry to the Board of Public Utilities for a five-year term. That's a reappointment. Larry Hyne to the Construction Board of Appeals for a five-year term. That is a reappointment. We have Bob Stickland to the Construction Board of Appeals for a five-year term. That is a reappointment. Bob Burr to the Downtown Development Authority, which is the resident seat for a four-year term. That is a reappointment. We have Mr. Tom Feeny to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term. Ms. Kathy Pyle to the Harvard Commission for a three-year term. This is a reappointment. Mr. Kevin Conway to the Harvard Commission. That is a three-year term. Elaine Shoemaker to the Library Board for a five-year term. Ms. Stephanie Timmer to the Local Development Planets Authority/Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a four-year term. This is a reappointment. Mr. Jim Ellis to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Reappointment. Ms. Sandy Fenske to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Reappointment. Mr. Robert Sherman to the Parks Commission for a three-year term. Ms. Janice Barney to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Reappointment. Ms. Rosalie Placati to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Reappointment. Mr. Clark Ruber to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. And Sarah McHugh to the zoning board of appeals, and she's going to be moving from an alternate position to a full member status. That is the slate. I will look for a motion in a second.
This is George Sleeper. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointments to boards and commissions as outlined in the agenda as, as read by Mr. Mayor Scott Smith.
Thank you.
Second, Steve Schlot.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public call in?
Yep, we have one call coming right now. Caller, you're on with the council. Please state your name, and then you'll have five minutes to make your comment, and when you finish, just state that you're done.
Okay. This is Gail Patterson Gladney, and I'm Van Buren County Commissioner for District 1. I just wanted to give, give a little news from the county. The 911 emergency service ballot request.
Gail, this is Brian DeSetz. We were accepting comments on the reappointment to the various boards and commissions.
I am so sorry.
That, that's okay.
Don't go away.
Okay, I will act away.
Um, Gail, if, if you're okay, what we'll do is just place you on hold and come back to you as soon as the council's completed the, the board and commission appointment process.
It'll go quick.
Okay, I will turn my volume up on the computer now that I could know where to come in.
Okay, we'll be right back with you.
All right. So no other comments? Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any other council comments?
I have one comment. We have an opening on the Housing Commission, and I noticed that's not on the list. What is the status of filling that position?
Um, you know, that one is still out there. I'll have to go through and double check where we're at on that, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So any other questions? So we've got a motion and a second. I just want to thank all the individuals for volunteering their time. There's a lot of names on there, and it's going to involve a lot of work, so just want to thank them ahead of time. So let's roll call this.
Schlot?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. So now, I know Gail's out there, but I'll just remind folks, if you have any comments, this would be the time to call in. The number is 637-0777. You'll have up to five minutes to address your concern. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Gail Patterson, our county commissioner. Sounds like she's on the phone.
Gail, you're back on with the council?
Okay, so I can go ahead now?
Yep.
Okay. This is Gail Patterson Gladney, and I, Van Buren County Commissioner for District 1. I just want to bring some news from the county. Van Buren County voters will be asked to approve a 911 surcharge of $1.83 on the August ballot. These funds are necessary for the operation of the call answering and dispatch services in Van Buren County, including facilities, equipment, and operations. The $1.83 would be in addition to the default rate of $1.17 for a maximum rate of $3 per month. And then the central government requires the county to make alterations in our leave policy, which expands leave time for employees may have significant virus issues, either personally or with a family member. And then the last item, the Van Buren County is asking residents to remind family members and friends to please complete the census. There's information I noticed on the South Haven website, which is great. And I wanted to just reiterate that the census results affect funding over the next 10 years. So it's very important, and it helps to fund roads, school lunches, Medicare, Medicaid, education, housing, transportation, and more, such as how many lawmakers we get in Lansing or, and Washington, DC. And I finish with my comments, and if there's any questions, I could take those.
Ms. Gail, thanks for calling. As always, we appreciate your input. Any other council comments? Looks like we're quiet. All right, Gail, thanks again for calling, and we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bye.
Ready. Anybody else on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, we don't, do not have any other calls at this time.
Very good. That takes us to city manager comments.
Members of council, just to give you all an idea of where we're at.
Members of council, just to give you all an idea of where we're at with with the continued limited operations. We are taking steps now to restore our staffing levels, bringing back our seasonal park staff, also restoring some of the team to their their positions at City Hall. We are planning by the middle of May to open City Hall back up, at least on a partial basis, to allow face-to-face customer interaction. I hope that we can get some greater guidance from either Van Buren County and/or the Health Department on how we proceed with that. This is a fluid situation, so almost daily we are in contact with the county as well as with getting communication from the state of Michigan. All I would say to the council and to the public is just be patient, and as quickly as we can get our buildings back open to the public, we will do so. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Brian. And then just to be clear, I know you mentioned City Hall, you know, trying to get it up and running, but our next meeting, we're still going to plan on the online format, just so everyone's aware.
At this time, that is the plan. However, if there is a change to the executive order specifically to the Open Meetings Act, we we may have to pivot. So this is one where I would encourage the council and any member of the public that's got questions, you can you can contact me, you can contact City Hall, or you can contact the council.
Perfect, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
All right, next, mayor and councilperson comments. I can work around the screen here. Who do I got? How about Mr. Schlock? I see you're my first bubble.
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
All right, Mr. Reeser.
I just want to take a moment and thank all the people in our community, our state and our country, that have provided the quality of life that we get to enjoy. I think during this tough time, many, if not all of us, recognize them more than ever, such as the mailman, the trash people, waiters, waitresses, all those people, and especially those on the front line, the police, the doctors and nurses. And I hope when this is all over, we continue to recognize the importance they play in our lives, and I hope many of them get the pay they deserve. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. George?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to thank all those that are serving on boards and commissions. I know it's a it's a takes up a lot of time and appreciate everyone who makes our community better. I'd also like to recognize all those that are working to make these difficult times a little bit better. An example is the the folks at Decadent Dogs who organized a a neighborhood cleanup last Friday. And it's those kind of people that are really going to help get us through this. The pandemic has gone on a lot longer than I had anticipated and but if we work together as a community, we will get through this. And may the force be with us all. That's it.
Nice, well done. And and that was a good cue with your dog to go across the screen there. That was perfect timing, by the way. So well done on that. Give him a biscuit. All right, Mr. Arnold. How's education?
Education's going well, but I have no comments.
Very good, all right. Well, thanks for educating. Oh, Ms. Wilkins, how's education?
Education is wonderful. No comment.
Very good. All right, Mr. Campbell?
No comment tonight.
All right, very good. All right, well, I just want to say just again, welcome to Brandon. Good things are coming. I'm glad you're on board. Center Street, you haven't been downtown, you know, get out and it's it's coming along. It looks great. I just want to give a shout out to the folks from We Care, Rosalie Placati, and all the folks that helped pull a pulled off a real successful drive for those essential needs. I got to do a little participation, some driving. It was well done. Just reminding folks, as Gail mentioned, the census, if you don't know how to do it, there's all sorts of information online to get out and get that done. So other than that, just just reminding folks to be patient. There, you know, just so you understand, we're we're fielding a lot of questions. We have folks that want us to do more than the governor wants, those that want less than the governor wants, and we're doing our best to just work with what the governor is giving us. It's changing, it's fluid, and we're doing our best to to make sure we're keeping everybody safe. So just patience, patience, patience. Keep checking on your neighbors and, you know, take care of one another. So on that note, thank you, everybody, for joining tonight, for listening tonight, and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Steve Schlock, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn, and we have to roll call it, so let's go.
Fleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, and again, thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Have a wonderful rest of your day.